And again, I know this is just a first reading.
Thank you. Any questions for Randy on this? Thank you. Again, this is a first reading. We'll take this up for final consideration at our next meeting. Now that you're sitting down nice and comfortable, Randy, we'll call you back up for the alcohol ordinance revision.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is some additional housekeeping in our alcohol ordinance related to cigar shop. As you're aware, cigar shops are allowed to serve. And in there, the percentage of their food, or their non-cigar, or their non-retail items that they can sell, it's kind of off skew. And they went through the audit this year, the third quarter report, they didn't meet that requirement. With that, the one owner of the cigar shop that does serve in the city did come before the Alcohol Control Board looking for an amendment to make it more consistent with the one other item, or one other retail outfitter that we have that is allowed to serve alcohol. They are amending the ordinance, or did recommend that the ordinance be amended, to allow 51% non-alcohol-related, 49% alcohol-related. With that, the Alcohol Control Board did recommend approval.
Okay. Questions for Randy on this item? Again, this is a first reading. We'll have this up for final consideration on our meeting on March 21st. Business license ordinance revision.
Yes, this is the last ordinance revision being proposed this evening. Keith, dealing with prosecution of city violations dealing with business license. It was noted that we don't have a procedure to suspend or revoke a business license in the city. Keith prepared an amendment that would allow for that. And with that, that is recommended for your approval.
Okay. Any questions or discussion on this item? And again, we'll take this up for consideration at our meeting on April 4th. I'm sorry, I think I misspoke. Today's March 21st. So, all right, next item is AZ 19-01. And Randy, if you'll continue on and get us started with that.
This is a de-annexation request of approximately 265 acres, Bartow County. The Bartow County government does own that particular property. It has been properly posted and advertised. Appears to be no conflicts of interest. With that, if y'all recall, back in 2004, 2005, the city and the county were concerned about a landfill that was coming in. And working together on that, the county chose to annex this into the city. The city did annex a large tract along the river there. Since then, the landfill did not occur. And the city, the county is working with the city of Emerson and Jacoby Development, based on the information that was provided in your package. With that, they're requesting that it be de-annexed. And Mr. Olson, representing Bartow County, is here for that request.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Manino at this point? All right. We'll open up a public hearing for the zoning portion of that request. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against may do so at this.
Yeah, it's just a de-annexation, just.
So I don't have to do any?
You don't have to do the zoning.
Don't have to do the zoning.
Never mind. The annexation, the de-annexation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Peter Olson, the county administrator. So, as Mr. Manino said, this property, and property to the north further, about 450 acres total that county owns. The water department bought it back in the '90s as a potential place to put a treatment plant, and then to have a place to spread the bio solids, you know, on the farms. And then when that landfill was looking at the Pagamine property on the east side of Pagamine Road there, you can see it where all the tailings ponds are. There's a state law that says a city has to approve any landfill within a half a mile of your jurisdictional boundary. So we said, well, Cartersville was against the landfill, we were against it. If we put this land in Cartersville, that knocks out a lot of the landfill. So that was successful, and we defeated that regional landfill. And it's just stayed in the city since then. Then in the last, you know, seven or eight years, as the economy's approved, a number of sort of mega projects have looked at that property. Y'all remember Avatron, the big amusement park that was funded out of Dubai, was looking at it. Then when the, you know, they changed their minds and backed away. So more recently, Mr. Jacoby, the Atlantic Station developer, has proposed some ideas for a mixed-use development with some retail, commercial, and stuff on the north part of the property. It's a little off the map there. You know, some residential and senior living on the other parts of the property. They've talked about a golf course. We really haven't seen a final concept from them. It's been kind of evolving, obviously, as they talk to their developers. But as part of the process, you know, there's one, so we got 250 acres in the city of Cartersville, there's 250 acres in unincorporated area, and there's 500 acres in the city of Emerson. So, you know, a project isn't going to work with three different jurisdictions over it. We're laying the groundwork for it. We haven't seen the details. But we expect if a good project goes forward, we'll put it all in the city of Emerson's jurisdiction. So as part of that, obviously, it has to come out of the city of Cartersville. You know, we've laid the groundwork, too, with TAD legislation. Y'all are familiar with that. Y'all did a TAD on the Kroger on Main Street. So that's, you know, that tool's available. Again, we're not going to move forward until we see more details. As I told the Planning Commission, we haven't seen a lot of details about this project yet. We certainly, we're going to preserve, we probably got two miles on the river there. So we certainly, our plan is whatever we do, we'll preserve the river frontage as like a public park, you know, with walking trails and stuff, because if you lose that, you don't get it back. So, and we know there's neighborhoods, you know, there's the Waterford across the river, and there's River Shoals on the southwest corner there. So we're certainly cognizant of protecting those neighborhoods with anything that we would move forward with. So no details, you know, and a lot of big ideas have been proposed, and they don't always come to fruition. But as part of the process of getting it ready for that development, we need to pull it back into unincorporated area. So, any questions, I'm glad to respond.
Questions for Mr. Olson? Questions for Mr. Lovell? You can't wait till after you like to watch a basketball game?
That wasn't what that was. Basketball games are on mute.
Okay, good. Any questions for Mr. Olson at this point? Thank you.
Well, I will be out of town for the next reading, but I'll have our zoning administrator come if any further issues come up.
Great.
So we appreciate y'all's consideration.
Thank you. It's a lovely shade of red you're wearing, Keith.
I know.
Anybody else wishing to step forward, speak for or against this de-annexation request may step forward and do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Again, we'll take this up for final consideration at our meeting on April 4th. Randy, if you will get us onto ZMA 19-01.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed zoning map amendment. We try to annually update it with all the previous year's annexations and zoning, so we have a current, up-to-date map. We haven't done that in the last couple of years, so we are requesting that we amend the map to include all the previous zonings and annexations that weren't on the actual official map of the city. Additionally, at the next meeting, we will have a map that takes out the property from the de-annexation request, if y'all choose to de-annex that. So we'll have even more up-to-date map. And then again, hopefully, we'll be back next year, and we'll keep it current. Again, we didn't do it last year, and we try to do it every year. With that, we did run it by the Planning Commission, and they did recommend approval.
Thank you. Questions for Randy on this? Very good. I guess I need to do a public hearing on that?
Yes, you do so.
Public hearing, I will open it now relative to the zoning map amendments. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close that public hearing for ZMA 19-01.
Mayor, I did just want to note for y'all, when y'all actually consider this for the second reading, I will ask, or Dave will ask if he's here, that you include in part of your motion to indicate the de-annexation, which is on the agenda right before that on that official map, so they don't have to sort of win it.
Very good. So noted. Ms. Brock, you have the next item.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Break. This is a retirement with effect of January 31st of 2019. With the Mayor and Council's approval, I would like to appoint Tom Gillum to serve as Department of Recreation Director. If you approve the appointment, Meredith will swear Tom in afterwards.
Okay. Very good. Any discussion? And if not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one. Tom, welcome aboard. Let's go ahead and do it. Ready, Meredith?
Yes. You saw him swear or affirm that he is a citizen of the United States, and has a state authority, that you want all aspects of the community, that the charter and the order of the city of Cartersville, that you will basically charge the Arts and Recreation Director. So, I'll be done. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, Adam Tammer, you've got that, too. I'm sorry, Good Neighbor Homeless Shelter, Brad.
Yes, Mayor and Council. This is the annual approval requested in order for the Good Neighbor Homeless Shelter to make an application for grant funds through the Department of Community Affairs. By approving this, we're saying that the homeless shelter is in the jurisdiction of the city of Cartersville, and that they are approved for funding by DCA. Your approval of this application is recommended.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Wilson, you have the next item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, before you is, Stormwater Division is looking at buying a trailer-mounted high-pressure sewer cleaner to assist in the maintenance of our storm systems. We put this item out to bid. Lowest bidder was Adams Equipment Company, offering a John Bean Jetter for the price of $74,564. This is, will be purchased through GMA Lease Pool, and is a budgeted item.
Okay. Thank you, Wade. Any questions or discussion on this? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we'd like for you to consider a small sewer extension project we need to do on Main Street. This will be constructing about 175 feet of new sewer, a couple of new manholes. The project was really prompted by some development work that's going on on Main Street. If you're familiar with the, depending on what generation you're from, the Steins Building, the Moon River, now it's about to be the Owen Security HQ. When they came in and started looking at that project, telling us what they were going to do, we realized that was going to be some additional demand from that development. And this whole area, that end of that block, is serviced by a four-inch clay sewer main. That's the same size that services an individual home. This thing is old, it's in an area that is virtually inaccessible now. And we were very reluctant to put that additional load on the line that we already have problems with. That is what the genesis of the project was. Obviously, we didn't know we were going to need to do this when we prepared budget the year before. So this is not a budgeted item. However, there are sufficient funds in a maintenance account for us to transfer to a capital account to cover the costs, so there will be essentially no budget impact other than moving some money around. We did open sealed bids on March 11th, received two bids, and the low bid came from WT Construction at $41,830, and would recommend that for your approval.
Does that sewer run underneath Main Street, like underneath the street?
It crosses there, yes. It crosses and actually goes through the gap between the theater and the chamber.
Okay. And then the timeframe for that project is?
If I remember.
Just generally, I know.
If I remember correctly, with the contractor, they said they would need at least 30 days to start, so you're looking at essentially the end of April.
Okay.
And construction-wise, it's very short. It's probably from the very first saw cut to driving off with it done, no more than two weeks, and that won't be constant work.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions for Bob on this item?
I have a question. Is the development, are they carrying any of the load on the cost?
They're not. If they had come to us and said, "We would like additional water meters," so they were expanding the capacity that they would need, then yes, we would have certainly asked them to participate. That building, if memory serves me correctly, already has three water meters associated with it. And the way they're developing, that's adequate to service, so we've already sold that capacity. Therefore, we figured there was no grounds to ask them for participation in this extension.
I noticed, too, in the description of the work, that you're limiting them to night, to the night hours, is that correct or no?
That's correct. That's my understanding. And they really wanted to do that themselves, just, it makes the work more efficient, especially in that little area for that short of a period of time. Yes.
Appreciate that.
Other questions? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Let's see. Well, Dan, you've got the next several. Come on up, Mr. Porter.
Yes, Mayor. The first item is a travel insurance deductible invoice. We had an accident a few years ago, and our claim is still active. Deductible amount due at this point in time is $5,745, and recommend it for your approval.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next item, Mayor, is with the Philadelphia Insurance Company's fiduciary insurance coverage for all our boards, and the cost is $9,887. It's originally started from the Pension Fund Board, they recommended this, and it's continued, it'll actually be paid for by the Pension Board funds.
Okay. Any discussion on this? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next item, Mayor, is with the Philadelphia Insurance Company's fiduciary insurance coverage for all our boards, and the cost is $9,887. It's originally started from the Pension Fund Board, they recommended this, and it's continued, it'll actually be paid for by the Pension Board funds.
Okay. Any discussion on this? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mayor Protem Cooley, if you'll handle this next item, please.
Next item on the agenda is number five, HVAC for the Bartow History Museum.
Yes, sir. This is one of the units at the Bartow History Museum, is older, and it needs to be replaced because it has a freon leak, and the cost to replace the freon is much more expensive. So it was recommended that we took some bids, and the best one is from Pendling Heating and Air, a cost of $6,242.45, and is recommended for your approval.
And Ms. Olmert, if you would, note for the record that the mayor did recuse himself on this item?
I will.
He didn't formally say that, but that's what he's doing.
And with that, any discussion? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I guess I'll unrecuse myself, and I'll mount that. Sorry. Mr. Porter, next item.
Yes, Mayor. This next one is a pension plan resolution. Currently, the pension plan that we had in effect since, I think it was 1967, has always been under the fiscal, or county year basis, and this is also applying to the new plan that was started in 2017, but basically been on a county year basis. And the board, Pension Board, recommends going to the city's fiscal year. It helps when the audit is done to have this done on the fiscal year basis. So the recommendation through this resolution will change that to the fiscal year basis for both pension plans.
Okay. Discussion? Not a motion?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, Dan.
Yes, sir. This is, again, this is the fourth amendment to the Cartersville Pension Plan. Again, this pension plan was started, I believe, in 1967, up through December of 2016, and still a lot of active employees under this pension plan. But what this does, again, it will change from a county year to a fiscal year basis for that pension plan.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, Dan.
Yes, sir. This is, again, this is the fourth amendment to the Cartersville Pension Plan. Again, this pension plan was started, I believe, in 1967, up through December of 2016, and still a lot of active employees under this pension plan. But what this does, again, it will change from a county year to a fiscal year basis for that pension plan.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And last one for you, Dan.
Yes, sir. The second amendment to the 2017 Pension Plan, this is a new plan started in January 2017, it does the same thing, it'll change this from a county year to a fiscal year for that pension plan as well.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Reinhardt, you've got the next bit here.
Honorable Mayor and Council, customer service needs to purchase additional locations. These are used to open accounts and bill utility usage. With the growth that we've, Cartersville has experienced over the last couple of years, we're closer to using the existing locations on file. I went ahead and took the liberty of purchasing 1,500 of these, as Cogswell, who's the sole source, is scheduled, basically is going to go up on the pricing, March the 1st. They were going from $5 a unit to $6 a unit. Also went ahead and purchased the maintenance on these to cover these. Again, was scheduled to go up as of March the 1st, from a dollar and a quarter to a dollar fifty. Because I went ahead and purchased these, there was savings of about $625 per block for 500 of these. This should last us about three to five years. And again, Cogswell is the sole source provider. I recommend approval after the fact, of course, of the purchase of the additional locations and associated maintenance costs from Cogswell, and the total amount of $9,375.
All right. Any discussion on this? Not a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, please, Tom.
Second, Honorable Mayor and Council, is a budget amendment that needs to be done to increase the funding for our fiscal year 2019 city pension plan contributions. Current budgeted amount is $2,751,500. It needs to be increased to $3,655,000. That's a difference of $904,395. In addition, the city did not properly fund the last six months of fiscal year 2018, which resulted in an additional $225,670 deficit. When you combine both of those, I'm asking for an amendment to, for the fiscal year 2019 budget for pension plan contributions of $1,130,065. And in your agenda, you've got the breakdown by fund, I won't go through all that. This is a one-time, should be a one-time budget amendment, and the funding source for this will be the current use of reserves for all the funds. I recommend approval, and again, this is a first reading. I recommend the approval of the attached fiscal year 2019 pension budget amendment in the amount of $1,130,065.
Questions or discussion for Tom on this?
I just know this has been a really tough couple of weeks for you, and I appreciate how you've handled it. I appreciate everybody's opinion and input, and how we can make this right. I don't think it was a mistake done on purpose, I think it was just change in requirements. And as a city, we want to take care of our employees, and that's what we intend to do.
Thank you.
All set. Any other questions or discussion? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
No, first reading.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Never mind. Well, I could blame somebody, because it's under certification on my, it's not under our, I know, it didn't say it on the agenda that we can't, but we got to have two readings on this?
You don't have to have, for any ordinance, you're required to have two readings at consecutive meetings. However, if council deemed that this was an emergency ordinance, and deemed the emergency is because of the pension shortfall, you could do it in one reading. And if council does wish to do that, you would declare it as an emergency ordinance, and you would go ahead and vote on it tonight.
Can the mayor declare that as an emergency ordinance?
The mayor can make that proposal to council, and then if council agrees to that, they can do that.
I would like to make the proposal that somebody, perhaps on council, would consider this an emergency ordinance, and that we may vote on this and get this approved, and get this behind us this evening, if somebody so chose to do that.
I'd like to make a motion that it be considered an emergency ordinance.
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Now we get to vote on actually approving it, or?
Yes.
All right, I'll let you, since you approved it the last time. Motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second, that motion.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Mayor, you may do that for the other items as well, related.
All right. I'd like council to perhaps consider that the next two items also be considered as emergency ordinances, and I would entertain a motion stating that.
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for navigating those waters. Continue on, Mr. Reinhardt.
Next item, Honorable Mayor and Council, again, is dealing with pension plan shortfall or underfunding. We've created a little bit of a hole for the last couple of years. The liability was recorded in our financial reports as of 6/30/2018, and the liability actually totals $1,486,713. The amount needs to be deposited in the pension plan to make the plan whole. The breakdown, again, is listed in your agenda. To fund this contribution amount, the offset will be a use of reserves in all funds, with the exception of the general fund, which I will cover in the next item. I recommend approval of the payment to the pension plan for the prior years underfunding in the amount of $1,486,713 to be funded as shown above.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Honorable Mayor and Council, is to fund the general fund portion of the
underfunding for the prior years of $892,473.82. I am requesting that the general fund be allowed to borrow funds from the electric fund. This is because we have reserves on file, or in, we have reserves on hand, but I don't want to deplete our reserve by adding an additional $892,000 burden to it. So I'm requesting that we be allowed to borrow funds for the electric fund. The loan will be paid back within a five-year period. Our target period is actually less than three years, and that's depending on the availability of the cash. City manager and myself met with the electric fund director and discussed the possibility and the necessary moving of cash, or borrowing of cash from the electric fund. Electric fund director was, basically approved it, and I recommend approval of the loan from the electric fund to the general fund in the amount of $892,473.82 for the purpose of paying the general fund's pension liability for the prior years.
Okay. Any discussion? And if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Tom, if you'll go ahead and do the monthly financial report, now we've got a couple items to add after that.
Okay. Honorable Mayor and Council, tonight we will be reviewing the financial report for January 2019, comparing it to January 2018. The general fund revenues increased over last January by $2.1 million. Expenses increased by $193,000. Two areas of revenue that I look at on a monthly basis, local office and sales tax, we have an increase there of about $238,000. Billing permits and inspection fees have an increase there of about $135,000. The water and super fund revenues increased over last January by $2 million. Expenses increased by $2.4 million, I'm sorry, $1.4 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased debt service expenses, and increased capital expenses. In the gas fund, revenues increased over last January by $1.9 million. Expenses increased by $6 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, increased cost of purchase gas, increased debt service, and increased capital expenses. In the electric fund, revenues increased over last year by $1.2 million. Expenses decreased by $153,000. This is due to decreased personnel costs, decreased operating expenses, decreased of purchase electricity, and increased capital expenses. In the stormwater fund, revenues increased over last January by $2,000. Expenses increased by $294,000. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. And if, just a reminder or note, we are, we have filed paperwork to be reimbursed from the GMA Lease Pool for some capital equipment that we purchased and have not been reimbursed for. The solid waste fund, revenues increased from last January by $78,000. Expenses decreased by $134,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. Once again, we have received some capital equipment, and we are, have filed the necessary paperwork for GMA Lease Pool, reimbursed in the solid waste fund also. And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues increased over last January by $53,000. Expenses increased by $187,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. That is my report for the evening.
Thank you. Anything to add? Questions for Tom on the finance report?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We do have two items to add to the agenda tonight. Chair will entertain a motion to add those two items.
Make a motion. Make a motion to add two items to the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We have two items added. Why don't we handle the, why don't you do the first one, Mr. Lovell?
Sure, Mayor. As y'all may recall, back in January, we received an anti-item notice claim from an individual, Larry Martin, represented by Foe and Associates in Atlanta, regarding an automobile accident in the city at that time. Y'all denied that claim. For some strange reason, that law firm has sent us a second anti-item notice on the exact same matter. In an overabundance of caution, I'm asking y'all to go ahead and deny that one as well, though I don't think technically we have to. It doesn't hurt anything to do so.
Okay. Thank you. So Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to deny the claim.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Brock.
Yes, Mayor. The Jillinger Park pool is in need of repairs in several areas throughout the pool. There are safety concerns. The expansion, excuse me, the expansion joints must also be replaced and sealed. Aqua Design Systems has given us a quote for $5,948 for their repairs. They were the original contractor for the pool renovation in 2013, and they have serviced the plaster several times since. Your approval of their repairs recommended.
I apologize for not asking this before now, but is that standard, is that in the realm of normal maintenance, to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, I have no idea, but I do know that when they drain the pool, they can't leave the water out for a substantial period of time, but a lot of the repairs needed cannot be found until the pool is drained, and there are areas of concern for potential safety hazards.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? If there are none, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Is there any other business that needs to come before council this evening? If so, come on, just step forward. And if you would, please, your name and your address for our clerk, so she can put it in the minutes, please.
Okay. Honorable Mayor and Council, my name is Rose Anna Shaw, 320 Jackson Street, Cartersville, Georgia. Hold on, let me get my phone. We're concerned with having some improvements done for our community. When you come up Jackson Street, and we call it the back alley, but I think the name of it is McElrich, or McElrich Street, you can't see how to turn, you can't see if a car is coming. So if we had some, I guess you would call them reflectors, so you can see the cars that are coming up the street before you make a turn, placed in front of Jackson Street on the property, I guess where the civic center is. And the same for McElrich, so you can see how to turn left or right. That would be a help to the community. And if that street, that same street, McElrich, should be a one-way, if someone is coming up the street, the other person has to back up in order for you to get by. So if that could be turned into a one-way, that would be a big help. The next item, Granger Hill, the residence in the back towards the end of Jackson Street, that area is very, very overgrown. So I don't know if-
No, I'm sorry, you're talking about from vegetation, like-
Vegetation is growing over into the street.
Thank you.
And I don't know if that would be the homeowner's responsibility, or who would be responsible for that, but I know as a child, there used to be a stream through there, so that means probably snakes, too, and there are children that live in that area, you know, closer to the bottom of the road. There's nowhere for them a place that they usually play on the side of the street. So that could be cleared. And then, as a property owner, I don't know who owns the property, between two houses, that vegetation is just out of control. It was cut back a little bit, but it's still a great deal that needs to be cut back.
Okay.
Next item. I don't know. We have a resident that burns a barrel. March is the windiest month of the year, and he just had a tree cut down, and he's burning right now. They play loud music. We have a number of elderly people in the neighborhood who are ill. I've had to call the police several times so they could turn the music down. I don't know if these people work or not, but it's a nuisance.
I guess I would tell you, anytime they're burning something or they're causing trouble, do exactly what you've been doing, is call 911.
Okay.
That's, I could tell you, that's probably, and I'm sure our fire chief wants to know if somebody's burning a barrel in the residential-
They burned the barrel at least three to four days out of the week. And, you know, to me, that's an issue, because if the wind should blow some, somebody's roof is going to get you on fire.
I agree.
And that, that's basically it for right now.
Mayor, if I could, ask you to stay after the meeting. Mr. Wilson, who's with Public Works, will get with you and get your contact information to call and go out there and meet with you and look at the particular traffic issues. Mr. Manino's office is responsible for overgrown lots. He'll meet with you and get your contact information, so they can go and look at that as well. And of course, you have 911, but I think the chief will probably get your contact information so he can follow up on those complaints as well.
Okay.
And just stay after the meeting, and they'll get all that information from you to look into these matters.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Any other business that needs to come before council this evening? I will just simply add at the end of this, our, part of our community passed earlier this week, just want to recognize Judge Carrie Nelson, who passed away earlier this week, and wanted to officially pass on condolences and thoughts to his family. Served our community well for a long time. Anything else that needs to come for the community tonight? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.